2024, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation, in case there's a fire, there's two ways to exit the chambers. Either behind me, behind you, the way you came in, or to my left, your right. Go down the stairs and walk a fair distance away from the building. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, per our bylaws, I'll be subbing for John tonight because he's our secretary. So, roll call. Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Lyndon DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is absent. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Filinski is here. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Walter Cruzel.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for the minutes of October 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any corrections? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no enforcement report this time. Public participation, anyone in the audience like to speak for anything or that is not on the agenda? Anyone? Anyone seeing no one? Closing public participation. New business, AR 33-65 Hazard Ave. This applicant here.
Good evening.
Good evening, name and address.
I am Dana Steele, professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates. And with me is Chris Sarrett from Family Ford. We're here for the renewal of their Aquifer permit registration.
Okay. Georgie, would you like to give us a little?
Certainly. Good evening, everybody. So this is an Aquifer protection renewal request for an existing facility that has an existing registration. They expired in 2023 and have finally come in for a renewal. This is for Activity D. There was a site inspection held. The site was found very clean, no spills or stains, no floor drains of concern. Dumpsters are serviced by a third party and are in good condition. They are secured from the public as well as their de-icing salt bags. They keep them located in a shed elevated from the ground so there won't be any intrusion to the groundwater. They have good housekeeping measures and all their catch basins are checked and their paved areas are swept on a daily basis. Their oil-water separator is checked for excessive sediment or trapped oil. And all of their chemicals and quantities are accounted for in the applicant's materials management plan, which is in good condition with proper labels meeting all codes. And these exact documents that you're receiving tonight are almost a replica of their 2018 approval. So I have received no comments from D, the Department of Public Health, or the water company, and they were properly notified 10 days prior as required by the regulations. And Steph has no further comment.
Okay. Dana, do you have anything?
The only thing we updated was one of the contacts for the manager was updated. So it's really a change.
Any questions? Walter, any questions? Vinnie? Frank?
Nope.
Nope, okay. And then I will entertain a motion.
So move it, Madam Chair.
I think I have to read it.
It's got to read it first. It's okay.
I read it.
You read it, but it needs to read it into.
Hang on, hang on.
All right, it's right here.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. I hereby make a motion to approve the Aquifer registration renewal for ARA number 33-65 Hazard Avenue. Application for an Aquifer protection renewal for Activity D over the A45 Aquifer. Dana Steele, Representative JCS Real Estate LLC, owner MAP 56 slash Lot 27 BL Zone.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Lyndon DeGray.
Four.
John Petronella is absent. Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Filinski is four. Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
It's Walter.
Oh, I'm sorry, Walter.
Four.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. Okay. You all got a schedule of our meetings for all the...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to note the bottom of the agenda says the next meeting is January 23rd, 2024. Small typo, 2025 is obviously next.
Yeah. Okay, we can make that. All right, I will entertain...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, Aquifer Protection is now closed.
6:36.
All right. Thank you.
Planning and zoning commission regular meeting of December 19th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fire evacuation, in case of fire, there's two ways to exit the chambers, through the rear doors, or to the, to my left, your right, the exit, go down stairs and walk fair distance away from the building. Roll call, please.
Okay, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Lynda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is absent. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky is here. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Walter Cruzel.
Here.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 20, December 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any corrections, comments? Seeing then, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I will abstain.
Okay, abstention. All right, we don't have a town attorney.
Do you want to seat anybody for adjournments?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Good idea.
Since Commissioner Petronella is out, we're going to see Walter Cruzel for this, the remainder of the meeting, sorry. No zoning enforcement. This time, public participation in the meeting, we welcome comments, concerns, and opinions to anything relating to planning and zoning that is not on our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Anyone in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, I close public participation. New public hearings, PH 3109.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the public hearing, number PH-3109, 555 Taylor Road, application for a special use permit for a new pylon sign, Sam Scrivener, applicant, Mullen Road LLC owner, MAP 99 slash lot 11, I-1 zone.
Is the applicant here? Please come up and name and address, please. Yes, and just make sure the little red light is on for the microphone.
Steve Winneyar is representative for Pete Graphics, employee, 89 Moody Road in Enfield.
All right, you're on TV. Tell us, tell us what you want to do.
Okay, so the proposition is to remove the existing sign located at 555 Taylor Road, the old Lego building, and replace with a multi-tenant sign. The new sign would be internally lit, similar to existing sign. The notable changes would be, it's a larger sign to accommodate the six different businesses that will be inside the 105,000 square foot building as it's a corporate headquarters. So the, the plans were submitted before, I'm not sure if you guys have the plans in hand.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, it's an industry standard for a building this size with this amount of tenants, like comparable would be, like Autozone has a larger sign, just to accommodate the multiple businesses USA would have there.
Steph?
Good evening, everybody. So this is pretty straightforward. He's just here tonight because our regulations require for certain signage to get special permit approval from planning and zoning. During my review, the application of the sign meets the standard criteria in the zoning regulations. There were no departmental comments, everything has been completed, reviews are all set. The only thing the commission must keep in mind when reading the motion is to state a finding. So on my motion page, I have a draft motion for you to approve and a freestanding, I'm sorry, a finding for you to read. No recommended site specifics, and it would be for 15 conditions of approval. Thank you.
Any questions? Any of the commissioners? None? Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to close. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak for or against this sign? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, gentlemen?
Yes.
Any questions? We have, we can discuss this. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH number 3109 for 555 Taylor Road, application for a special use permit for a new pylon sign, Sam Scrivener, applicant, Mullen Road LLC owner, MAP 99 slash lot 11, I-1 zone with the following 15 conditions of approval and the finding of, "The freestanding multi-tenant identification size, sign, is proportional to the size of the development and the streetscape where the property is located. In no event will a freestanding tenant identification sign exceed a height of 40 feet or an area per side of 240 square feet."
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any? None? Okay, then roll call, please.
Okay, Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
John Petronella is out. Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky is four. Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
And Walter Cruzel.
Four.
Okay.
Okay, unanimous vote, motion passes.
You're all set now.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, PH 3110ZA.
Okay, Madam Chair, we are now going to the public hearing, PH number 3110ZA, application for a text amendment to allow vet office subject, subjects eliminate limitations into BR zones, Enfield Corporate Properties LLC applicant.
Okay, applicant here. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Attorney Paul Smith of Smith &amp; Bishop LLC, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. With me is Frank Traiano, who is a principal of Enfield Corporate Properties LLC, which is the applicant for this text change. So we were, Mr. Traiano was actually before this board in 2023 and got an approval to build a veterinary office, and it's more than that, right? It's, is it a, is it a hospital too, or something, or just the office? Veterinary office down on Elm Street, it's, I think it was 1723 Elm Street?
21, yep.
21, I'm sorry. And in the interim, the veterinarians that are putting this together, it's called Possum Vet Care Group, they are, were looking for a location at least to get started because they, their business model is such that they need to get going. So Mr. Traiano has a building which was in the BR zone and has available space on the first floor, so it would work. So we were looking at how to, how to get, how to accomplish this, and frankly, we're, staff was very cooperative in the suggestion, which led to tonight's application is, was to expand the allowance of a veterinary office into the BR zone, your business regional shopping center district zone, with the caveat that we put in our text change, that it would be limited to any site, had to be less than five acres. So the intent was not to put it on a large sort of shopping center site, but on a, one of the smaller sites that's in the BR zone. Mr. Traiano at, I think it's 113 Elm, has the office space, as I said. It meets the criteria for the text change in the BR. This would again allow them to start their, their operation immediately, and then it'll take about a year to, I would say, to complete construction of the, of the Elm Street building, your building for them. So it would give them the opportunity to move forward. Also, I don't think it's a change that would be harmful or in any way impactful in a negative way on the town. It would give other veterinaries, if they want to come into town, the opportunity, I guess, if they could find a BR location, to do that. I don't think that would necessarily be a negative. Again, we got, I think, a favorable report from the, from the planning staff, and we appreciate their work, working with us to sort of develop a strategy that allows us to go forward. I would note, one of the things I've heard is that there really is no, you know, there are some part-time vet offices in town, but there is no, like, full-time staffed veterinary office, which I think is kind of unusual for a town the size of Enfield. So if we can accommodate this and move it forward, it would, I think it would benefit the community, would obviously benefit the veterinary group. I don't think I have much else to add, Frank, if you have anything that's certainly appropriate.
Thank you. Frank Traiano, principal for 113 Elm Street in Enfield, under Enfield Corporate Properties, my address, 1408 Enfield Street in Enfield. The, the text amendment is actually going to provide us the opportunity to get them in practice much sooner. We, from, from actually having a conversation with your commission, we had a little challenges with OSTA. So we had to redesign the plans, we were talking about that before. I think Mr. Grillo actually was talking about the accesses and infusion, same thing with Mr. Holinsky. We had some challenges with OSTA. We have since settled that through Hesketh and Associates. So we are actually eliminating one of the curb cuts that'll be going for this property, and it's going to be maintained right in front by the veterinarian hospital or veterinarian services on that side. They're going to be closing off one of those entrances. You'll be seeing that plan coming forward, but it also causes to have a little bit of a delay on the development of the site. In the meantime, the opportunity for bringing a veterinarian group under this text change would be wonderfully helpful for them, start their practice, bring in services, and I know they're actually going to be mentioning, there's two of the partners are here for the veterinarian group, two of the doctors, and as they said, there's a limited access, and they're simply want to reflect that themselves as to the opportunity of what bring this forward, but at the same time, the challenge that Enfield poses since they're constantly being talked to about opening as fast as possible. Our development has not slowed, it's just been, I guess you can say, slightly delayed. Weather is a factor, obviously, it's two. This is the first December that's been below average for quite a while, and I know that myself, and needless to say, it's actually slowed us down a little bit. It has not changed our program, it has not changed our intention, and we're looking forward to making that development happen. But I did want to bring up two of the vets from that group, they wanted to actually make a quick statement themselves, just to let you know how urgent, how accommodating and appropriate this would be, but also how helpful it'd be as well.
Name and address for the records, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. Sarah Dupre Row, 91 Coronado Drive in Newington.
And I'm Dr. Alexis Suter, 27 St. Moritz Circle in Willington.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been before, you guys, before, a couple times now. So the, you know, as, since we have had the delays, you know, we do know how desperate the town of Enfield is for veterinary care. I work frequently in Bolton and Vernon, and I see people every day from, from Enfield because they can't get care any closer. The two clinics that are in town are both very part-time, and they've reduced hours in the last year as well, which is making it even harder. So at this location, you know, it would be not, not a full-service, not a full-service hospital, it would be an office to provide wellness and basic illness care to the dogs and cats in Enfield, just to try to be a release valve, so your people aren't having to drive 30, 40 minutes, you know, to get their patients seen. So that's, that's why we want to try to do it early, before we're able to open the larger facility, just to, to help out, help out the dogs and cats of town, so.
Thank you. Steph?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant summed it up pretty well, I'd say. We've been looking at a lot of alternatives to try and find a solution to the situation you've heard tonight. At the end of the day, the best option was to go forward via, again, another text amendment. We figured that would be the fastest way to get this resolved, so the vet people can open. So with that, they are proposing a veterinarian office use as a site plan review in the BR zone, subject to footnote 25, that veterinarian offices are not permitted on parcels greater than five acres in size. We figured having some certain limitations in the BR zone, the commission might find more favorable, since our BR district is pretty much our mall area and our primary stores. So if you would like to make a motion tonight, you must state a finding for your opinion tonight about how the amendment, how the amendment adheres to the plan of conservation and development, and the only recommendation was that the effective date will be January 6, 2025, after the appeal period.
Okay. Okay, anyone in the public like to speak for or against this application? Anyone in the public want to speak for or against? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, Ms. Secretary? If you'd like to.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH number 3110ZA, application for a text amendment to allow veterinary office use, subject to the limitation in a footnote, that only parcels five acres or less may apply for this use in the BR zone, subject to certain criteria, limitations, and application procedures. We also have the following findings. In adopting this regulation, the commission has considered the Plan of Conservation and Development, POCD, and finds the amendment to be consistent with the POCD. Reasons for approval: The amendment is limited to certain sized parcels in the BR zone and includes criteria and application procedures the commission determines to be sufficient to assure that public safety and convenience will be served. This amendment shall be effective on January 6, 2025.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
John Petronella is absent. Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky is four. Vinnie Grillo?
Four.
And Walter Cruzel.
Four.
Okay, unanimous vote, it's passed.
Wait, 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 with the effective date of?
January 6.
January 6, thank you.
I said that.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Okay, so be open, January 6.
Just making sure.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, new business, SPR 1945, 395 Enfield Street. Staff, is anyone here for this?
Were you gonna make, consider a motion?
Yep, 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 you're right, I'm sorry. I forgot, please forgive me. I will entertain a motion to add Gale Toyota, I don't have.
50 Palomba Drive.
I, hold on, I got it here. SPR 1907 Gale Toyota, two items C, under new business.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, it was just tucked away. Okay, SPR 1945, 395 Enfield Street, is the applicant here?
That application has been tabled, Madam Chair, until January 9.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, and SPR 1946, 188 Moody Road.
Okay, Madam Chair, SPR number 1946, 188 Moody Road, application for site plan review for truck terminal expansion. Troyano Realty Corporation, applicant owner, map 100 slash lot 12, I-1 zone.
Okay.
I thought you put, you know, Toyota under 10C.
No, that, we put it under 12C.
12C.
All right, yeah, okay. Okay, all right. Sorry. Okay, welcome, gentlemen. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman. For the record, Attorney Paul Smith of Smith &amp; Bishop LLC, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. I'm here representing the applicant. With me to my right is Dave Ziyaks of SA, FA Hesketh, the professional engineer on this site. And to my left is Frank Troyano, who is a representative of Troyano Realty Corp., which is the owner of 188 Moody Road. I think we have architects from CHK here. We're going to be part of this presentation, I think someone from Martin Brower also. Just by way of background, this is a 15-acre, little over a 15-acre parcel on Moody Road. Across from it is the main facility that Martin Brower has in Enfield. It's been, it's been there for a number of years. This site was before the commission in 2011 for almost the identical application that you see before you, which basically is an expansion of the distribution warehouse facility at 191 Moody Road. This usage and the plan is almost identical to what the commission approved back in October of 2011. And so we're here tonight really looking for a reapproval, if you will, of the prior approval. The plan obviously was put on hold for a number of years, but has now come basically to fruition. So with that, I would turn it over to, I don't know who's going next, do you want? So the representatives of Martin Brower, that'll just sort of highlight what they do and their intent to go forward. I can grab my chair.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Zach Perry. I'm actually with Ray's Holdings. Need address? Address is-
Corford is fine.
6250 North River Road, Suite 9000, Rosemont, Illinois. Thank you for having me tonight. The, the, the next few slides that you will go through are really just to pull the curtain back on our global organization, to give you guys a glimpse into that, into that organization. So I'm with Ray's Holdings. Ray's Holdings is the parent company of three, three business entities. That's, that's made up of Ray's Beverage Group, we're the largest beer distributor in the country. Ray's Coca-Cola Bottling, we're the, one of seven of the largest Coca-Cola bottling and distribution companies in the country. And then obviously Martin Brower. Martin Brower is global domestic and international McDonald's and Chick-fil-A distribution. They all fall under the Ray's Holdings and that's who I, that's who I represent, the parent, the parent company. There are 230 facilities within our, within our organization. It's about 26 million square foot of building under roof. Martin Brower makes up about 40% of that. So a brief history I added, I added in here, we're, believe it or not, a beer company at heart. And in 98, we acquired Martin Brower and have expanded that globally and domestically. If you could go to the next slide, please, we're, we actually have a, our own little pride section that's, we're privately owned company, family, family-owned and operated since 1978. The, and just more specifically into, into this project, just, I wanted to give you a briefing and insight as to our, our whole organization. We're not just, we're not just Martin Brower, Ray's Fleet Management. The building that we're proposing to you tonight is, is, is partial, is a hybrid between Martin Brower's transportation offices and Ray's Fleet Management, which is a service to us, which we own and operate our own fleet within our organization. I've put together a couple, a couple statistics on what Martin Brower does just in Enfield. You can see we're quite, quite a large, large operation footprint just in the Enfield territory, covering all of New England. It's about 15 million cases annually. We're delivering 24/7 around the clock, and that's just the Martin Brower side. RFM, which is the other critical part of this proposed plan, they are, they service the fleet for, if you could go to the next slide, they service our fleet and fleet, tractors, trailers. There's, there's 10 service technicians and currently they, they are operating out of a leased space about 2.9 miles away, in a residential area, that we're hoping to be able to allow them to come closer to, to our operations. So the existing building, it's 4,200 square foot, it's, it's only two service bays, limited, limited operations inside of that. Obviously, we're having to shuttle our transportation, our fleet over there through residential, through residential areas. And then there's some services that we, that we can't offer at this, at this leased building. The, RFM is a critical service to our, to our industry, because obviously we own and operate them, we want to make sure that they're, they're fully functional. So this, this building, which, if you go to the next slide, we're proposing, it's 12,000 square foot, square foot building that will, it's directly across from our current operation on 191 Moody. It's, it's in a role to, to have our services there, with state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art truck service center with a wash bay, with supporting offices. But as a part of this, we're also integrating some of Martin Brower's functions, the transportation offices is what we're planning to put in here. Transportation is the outbound services on the operational side, so we can have, have them be a part of this. We're planning for three service bays, there's a wash bay for, for our fleet, and then we're also adding on the, the, the transportation outbound side of, outbound side of the operations for Martin Brower. So all of our drivers will come, will enter and exit this building every day, and, and providing them with a, relieving some, some of the space on the, some of the congestion on the existing site and putting them in this new building. As a part of it, we're, we're adopting some, some new technologies and some things that are coming to market, Shore Power, for instance, which is a, taking carbon emissions down by, by reducing our, our refrigerated trailers, we're plugging them in as opposed to running the diesel refrigeration consistently. That will be an instrumental part of this project. And then some of the other, some of the other things, just having, having a good operations, good fluid operational space within the offices to, to do this. As a part of it, we would be relieving some of the congestion, congestion from our existing site, taking the fuel island and moving that, moving it over to this, to this side, because all of the drivers are obviously going in and out of this facility. And again, otherwise, that's, that's about it for this, for this proposed property from my side. But again, we thank you all, we thank Frank Troyano for, for his time and investment and everything that we've done for, for years together, and we look forward to this opportunity.
Staff? Dave?
Yep.
Oh, okay, Dave got more, never mind.
I mean, you could vote now if you'd like.
You might, you might not like it if we do.
It's been, it's Christmas.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Dave Ziyaks. I'm a professional engineer, principal with FA Hesketh Associates. We're located down in East Granby. And getting down to the nuts and bolts of the site plan review, there's the existing conditions on the site, if you're familiar with it at all. On the, on all these maps, north is to the top of the page and west to the left and east to the right. And on the, on the westerly side of the site here, as you come in, there's an existing driveway, which actually has a name, Troyano Avenue. Very original there, Frank. And on this side, west side of the driveway, has been the longstanding fuel terminal operated under the Troyano name. It has the surface tank and it has the canopy out front for fueling. That was, over the last few years, has gone through major renovations and upgrading for safety and environmental, you know, regulations to operate the facility. Just to the south of that is an existing 11,000 square foot industrial building that currently has a couple of local contractors working out of that building that's going to remain. And then way down here in the southwest corner, a lot of people probably don't even know it's there, there is a cell tower operation. It's been down, been there for many years, and from my understanding, the lease was just renewed on that, so that's going to continue. And then the Martin Brower operation would be this central portion of the site. And what we're also proposing this evening is a 50,000 square foot flex industrial building that would be up across the Moody Road frontage. The access will continue, we're going to be upgrading the private driveway to accommodate the circulation and the, the new truck traffic coming in and out. And we are proposing a secondary driveway way over here on the east end. That's really for fire access, you know, overall safety access around the site. And it provides a nice access point to where the potential visitors and employee parking area for the new 50,000 square foot building would be located. The, the truck-oriented site, side of the building would be on the west side, where the trucks could come in and out for this building, loading and access. And then a nice parking lot over here on the east side for, again, for visitors and employees. But focusing down here on the Martin Brower site, there'd be this 12,000 square foot building here. On the south side, there'll be a terminal facility with a canopy where the trucks can fuel. The, the tank will be located over here in this island here. This is really going to be moving this operation from, it's now occurs across the street. When we rebuilt that facility back a few years ago, we put a fuel facility at that location, but they're going to be moving that over to this location here and taking it off the, the one across the street, open up some more flexibility for access around that site over there, it's pretty tight over there. Then there'll be some driver parking, employer parking over here. And then around the perimeter will be parking, open parking for the tractor trailers. And then some of the cabs can park up in this area over here on the north side. So you'll be basically come into the facility, travel around to the east, enter in on the east side and exit on the west side and go about your business. The maximum coverage in the I-1 zone is 66%, so what all of these activities on the site, we're at 59.81%, so we're not maximizing the coverage. As permitted in the regs, when you talk about parking, obviously we have a lot of different uses on this, on this site. So to calculate the parking demand, we follow the same procedure that we used back in 2011 that the commission approved at that time, which was the option of using ITE data, Institute of Transportation Engineers, parking demand data for this type of light industrial warehousing type facility. And when you run the numbers using that, based on employee counts, you end up with a parking demand of 88 parking spaces. But we feel that's a little light because of the shift turnovers at the Martin Brower location. There'll be some, some drivers, employees parked here and then others will be arriving. So what we're proposing is 131 parking spaces throughout the site to, we feel comfortable with that, with that number as being the appropriate parking, you know, for, for this type of facility. We have a full landscaping plan that was submitted. There'll be the addition of some nice street trees along Moody, Moody Road. And then what we have is a comprehensive stormwater plan that was reviewed by the Wetlands Commission again and approved. But there are four individual water quality detention basins scattered around the site that will allow us to maintain flows off the site, meeting the stormwater requirements of the town. And also provides full water quality, volume, capacity on the site, meeting the latest 2024 DEP guidelines. They actually increased that water quality volume by about 30% based on, you know, historical rainfall data and just their own data they've been collecting off of commercial and industrial sites. So that required us to rerun some of the calculations and do a little bit of redesign of the stormwater plan to accommodate that. But it's, it's basically the, the same plan as was, was previously approved. But that does open up some rather large landscaped areas, natural landscaped areas mixed in with the buildings, so the site will have a good feel to it once it's all developed. We have a full erosion and sedimentation control plan per the regulations. The site lighting was just the minimum amount for security. There'll be full cutoff fixtures and they will match, pretty much match the new lighting that was put in across the street at the Martin Brower facility. All the lighting on the site will be the same, so it'll be a nice comprehensive plan. Staff is asking for a full photometric design once we have a contractor selected for that, and it's one of the conditions of approval, which is, which is fine. There'll be public water and sewer to the site. One question that came up at the Wetlands and maybe one of the commissioners here might be interested is that with the car wash and the, or truck wash and other miscellaneous floor drains within the maintenance facility, all of those floor drains will be connected to the, the sanitary sewer system. They will not be connected to the storm drainage system. And we had a chance to look at the staff comments. Doesn't appear to be any concerns remaining. As usual, your planning staff has done an excellent job and they're summary to you. And they have the list of conditions beyond the standard conditions that they're recommending, and we reviewed those and we don't have any problems with that. They're all minor in nature, will not require any significant changes to the plans. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to CHK, our architects on the project, and they can give you a brief overview of the, oh, here's the, this is a colored rendering that I have from 2011. Since it's almost the same exact plan, I didn't bother to recolor it. But this gives you a good idea of exactly what's going on. The tank, the 11,000 square foot building, the new 50,000 square foot building, which we may or may not have to come back to the commission depending upon whether this exact building gets built or whether a tenant for the building might, a few changes, we'll, we'll work with staff on that when the time comes. But this is the new, in orange here is the new Martin Brower building, you can see the circulation around that. And you can see the site, around the site is fairly heavily wooded, it's going to remain that way because of the topographic and wetland conditions around the site. So this gives you a good bird's eye view of what the site will look like. And then the architecture. I'll step aside for a moment. I'll step aside for a moment.
My name is Karen Panone. I'm with CHK Architects, who are located in Simsbury, Connecticut. Going to start off by talking about the floor plan for the building design. The primary function of this building is for routine maintenance of Martin Brower's long-haul trucks. The building is divided into four primary zones. The first zone is the wash bay. The second zone are the service bays. The third zone is the office area, and the fourth zone is a mezzanine. A portion of the office area supports the service function, or the service base, and the other portion of the office area supports the transportation department. The transportation department is where Martin Brower's truck drivers would report to, to receive their assignments. The mezzanine, the primary function is for mechanical equipment and storage, and there's also a small portion of it that could accommodate future growth of the office function.
My name is Rich Kaiser, also with CHK Architects, at 573 Hop Meadow Street in Simsbury. I wanted to talk about the exterior elevations and the materials being used. As you heard from Zach, MB Trucking provides a high-quality service to their customers. It's important to them that their trucks are attractive and well-maintained, and this building is part of maintaining that part of their work product. The exterior is a combination of ground face, concrete block units, and insulated metal panels. The concrete block units will be constructed to a height of 10 feet, and that'll provide a solid, durable base for the building. The insulated metal panels will go from that 10-foot mark up to the roof, and that provides a well-insulated, also attractive, with a different material. Product that is able to be pretty easily maintained both inside and out. The overhead doors you see are all insulated metal doors with vision panels. On the part of the building that is closest to the road, we've used a change in materials to bring attention to the main pedestrian entrance. Those materials are brick and cultured stone, and there's also a small awning, accent man, and the point of this was to, again, bring some attention to that corner. It's closest to the area where pedestrians would interact with the building. The roof is a low-slope metal roof that drains into gutters. Those gutters go into leaders, and those leaders go into the storm drainage system. And that's the building construction.
Yeah, something else you want to say?
So, thank you very much, again, Frank Troyano for Troyano Realty Corporation. My address is 1408 Enfield Street in Enfield. We're very happy to have a relationship with the Martin Brower Corporation. Reyes Holdings is the parent company of Martin Brower, as Zach was mentioning. Zach was kind enough to give us an invitation to go to Virginia to find and look at two different locations, which we flew down as a team to the civil engineer and the architectural firm CHK. We had a wonderful tour. It gave us the great opportunity of understanding exactly what their expectations are. And as Rich said from CHK, this is certainly a project that is important to Martin Brower. They don't want to be where they are. They want to be able to have a state-of-the-art facility that does everything that is, you know, responsible for their new opportunity and the new distribution that they have an obligation for, for McDonald's. But the trucks themselves, you've all seen the trucks, but it's hard to realize that those cabs are actually Martin Brower cabs, those trailers are actually representing their client. They have a wonderful relationship. They've been here for 40 years. They have had a relationship with our family for the same time. To clarify what Mr. Ziyaks said, I did not name the road. That road was, the road itself was actually, my grandfather bought this property back, back in, I believe, in the early 60s, and it was a potato field. And as a lot of things in Enfield have developed into something else, this is a continuation of that development and those changes. It has changed, and obviously, it started with the terminal that we still own and operate ourselves, and then, obviously, our relationship with Martin Brower started back in '84, and we're actually happy to have them be here for much longer. They're one of the largest employers in town. They're looking to reinvest, but they're doing it the right way. They want to bring the trucks away from the residential section. They want to bring it to where it belongs, into the road that was actually designed for truck traffic, and they actually want to bring it where it's actually something where, in a way, it's actually hidden from the front street, that we hope to have another development with that building in the front, and they actually designed exactly that from our 2011 presentation, for the vehicles actually being covered up a little bit. But it doesn't take away from the need that they have for this expansion and for the investment that they're doing for logistics on the amount of growth. As you saw the map from Zach, it's actually, the map shows that this facility, this one facility, handles every McDonald's in New England except for Fairfield County. That's an amazing task from one building. And they're not looking to expand the building. They're looking to expand the logistics of actually the trucking, but do it correctly. We think we designed a nice building. We think we designed something that would give them their growth that they're still looking to do, and we think they have been a wonderful partner for ourselves and for Enfield. And we're happy to have, hopefully, a nice condensed development presentation for something that's actually a really large development, and I think a benefit for everybody, including, as I said, moving the trucks away from where they are and bringing them right across from their distribution center, to make it easier for their own staff and safety for everybody as well. And that's all I have.
So I think that was a good summary of what we want to do. Just my emphasis would be, it's really a reapproval of the 2011 approval. Obviously, Dave or the architects or anybody is here to answer any questions that you might have, so happy to do that if you have questions.
Staff?
Thank you. So anytime Frank walks in our office, I know it's going to be for an interesting project like this one. So the applicant summed up everything. Pretty much, that was in my memo, probably better than what I wrote. You have a great understanding now of the history and what we're looking at. If anything, it's going to be better configured going forward, more landscaping, a better internal layout. And contrary to what Dave said earlier about conditions, there are two additional conditions that came in. Our traffic engineer had been out of the office and had just gotten back from leave, so his comment will be a condition of approval for number six. And then I did have a conversation today with Dave Ziyaks about the required 10% of parking to be EV charging spaces as required by the building code. I did verify with the building official today about that code, and if it would apply in a situation being an industrial property and the regulation states for commercial properties. After that conversation, it was concluded that these types of properties do also fall under that building code requirement, so that would be condition five. Just to recap, there will be six conditions of approval. One being a detailed photometric plan to be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit, subject to staff review and approval. Two being discrepancies on landscaping sheets. LS1 and LS2 will be corrected to show correct species, symbols, quantities, and the legend from LS2 will be relocated to LS1. That just makes it easier for us when we do bonds. Number three, parking spaces will be restriped at the existing 11,035-square-foot industrial building. This was agreed when we were speaking with the applicant's PE, just to make that part of the site look much more proportional and aesthetic. Condition number four, the engineer's comment shall be incorporated onto the final plans. His comment is, applicant will add three hydrodynamic separators in the parking lot areas at catch basin 16, 6, and the following catch basins 10, 11, 12, and 13 to be connected in line into one final catch basin outfall into the water quality basin number three. These are the new ones. Ken, I hope you have a pen. Condition number five, final plans shall include EV charging stations, parentheses, 10%, as required by building code.
Do you have it written down so that, then you could give them that note? That would be great.
Yep, I can do that. And number six, traffic comments, per traffic comments, no parking any time signage will be installed along the entire frontage of Moody Road. This came in just the other day from our traffic sergeant. He states his comment, based off the fact that at this general location, there had been parks parking along the frontage in the past, and he would just like to refrain from that happening going forward, just for better sightlines, since the sightline issues are created when trucks pull over on the shoulder. So that's all I have.
Okay.
So I would just have one comment with regard to the new conditions. So, and staff raised this, of course, there is a state statute now that says whenever you build a multifamily or commercial, you have to provide for the infrastructure for 10% of your parking spaces to be EV. Doesn't mean we're going to put in, just, the statute doesn't require we actually put in 10% stations. In fact, there's probably not enough power on Moody Road to do that, to be honest with you, but what it requires us to do is put in the infrastructure, basically the conduits, if you will, so that at some point in the future, when that becomes possible, or I suppose the state starts to require that we actually install the physical charging stations, that the infrastructure's there to do it. You don't have to tear up the parking lot. So just that clarification, so, because it's kind of, this was passed in '23, and it's, we've discussed it, and I'm sure Dave has, with a number of different towns as to what's required and what's not. What's required is, we'll put in the infrastructure so that it can be done, but there really isn't, there isn't transmission lines large enough to accommodate all the new development if you were actually putting in charging stations. So it's sort of a futuristic goal at this point, whether there'll actually be charging stations, but it's just, we have to make sure that we have the conduits in place so that we can do it. So just as a clarification. And I think that's, that would probably be what, when you talked, Georgie, to the Building Department, what they were requiring.
Yep, that was what he said, too, and that the EV charging spaces can be more detailed when they apply for their building permit.
Yeah. So I just want to avoid that confusion, you know, because people drive by and say, where's the stations? It's like, that's not what's required at this point. And there is, like I said, there are all kinds of, if you talk to EverSource, which I have, there's all kinds of capacity issues when you try to put in too many charging stations, so.
Okay. Any Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one question. During the conversations you were just having, I kept hearing that it was just like the last plan that was approved, just like it, but what's different? I didn't see the last plan, this is why I'm asking you. So what makes it so different from the last plan that was approved?
Excuse me, Madam, Commissioner Grillo. I can add in, on my memo on the first page, there's a parcel history, and there's a compare and contrast paragraph that explains what changed and what's the same. I would read it to you, but Commissioner Holinsky has my memo.
No, that's okay, because actually, the 211 plan is this colored plan, so this is the approved plan, so. I think I mentioned during the earlier presentation that I just didn't feel compelled to recolor the new plan, but it's the same plan. The building here is a little larger, and some of the configuration of the parking around the building has changed a little bit, only because, you know, Martin Brower has specific needs today. But basically, everything is, the components are all the same. Yeah. Sure.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Go.
This is probably more for staff than for you guys, but there's a statement in here that says, based off the above, and it's talking about the parking. It says, we're not sure if a waiver is being requested. It does not appear to be requested based off the submitted materials. So it should be clarified with the Commission. Can you just elaborate on that?
I can clarify that, too. Yep, so when I was doing my review, I was looking at the parking calculations, which they were using an industrial use of 1.1 parking spaces per employee. This comes from, not our zoning regulations, but the International Transportation Engineering Manual, 11th edition, for the parking calculations, which when I calculated it out, the ITE manual actually provides more of a required parking space allowance, and our regulations do. The requirement for ITE would be 88 spaces. Our regulations would have it capped at 49.6 if we were to follow our table. Of course, in the regulations, the applicants are allowed to ask for a waiver of the required parking spaces, but seeing how they're using ITE data for their site, and that works best for this type of development for the applicant, they're not asking for a waiver as their parking is well-required, well-meant, and they will have all proper ADA spaces, as well as their EV infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I will entertain a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1946, 188 Moody Road, application for a site plan review for a truck terminal expansion. Troyano Realty Corporation, applicant owner, map 100/lot 12, I-1 zone, with the following site-specific conditions. Number one, a detailed photometric plan will be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit, subject to staff review and approval. Number two, discrepancies on landscaping sheet LS1 and LS2 will be corrected to show correct species, symbols, quantities, and the legends from LS2 will be relocated to LS-1. Number three, parking spaces will be restriped at the existing 11,035-square-foot industrial building. Number four, engineering's comment shall be incorporated into the final plans. Applicant will add three hydrodynamic separators in the parking lot areas at CB 16, CB 6, and the following CBs 10, 11, 12, and 13 be connected in line into one final CB outfall into WQB number three. Number five, final plans shall include EV charging stations, 10%, as required by building code. And number six, per traffic comments, no parking any time signage will be installed along the entire frontage of Moody Road. And in addition to that, there are conditions seven through 30, which are general conditions.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any conversation? Okay. Roll call, please.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky is four. Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Walter Cruzel.
Four.
Okay, unanimous decision.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You, too.
Okay, we're going to do the...
I don't know their address in Paloma. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh...
I know it's Paloma Drive, but I don't know their physical address.
Hang on, hang on, we'll look it up. What is it? Fifty, yeah, fifty, fifty Paloma Drive.
That's easy to remember.
Okay.
There you go.
All right.
Do we have a motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
Okay, so we can just say we're accepting the request.
Right. Okay. Excuse me. We're still in a meeting, so you need to take it outside, please. Thank you. We're in... SPR 1907, Gail Toyota, 50 Paloma.
Yes.
Okay. I just...
Okay, SPR 1907, this is a request for a narrative related to our request for a six-month extension to the 24-month timeframe from approval to application for a building permit for Gail Toyota at tonight's...
Sorry, we made you wait.
For Gail Toyota. Sorry.
Please, tell us what's going on. Name and address, please.
Good evening. For the record, Guy Hesketh, I'm with FA Hesketh and Associates, and our corporate offices in East Grammy, Connecticut. Almost two years ago and three days to the date, we came before this commission, and we received SPR approval for the expansion of Gail Toyota on Paloma Drive. And subsequent to that, there's been a lot of coordination internally with the dealership and the folks at Toyota. Toyota's a large corporation, and they like to have their hands in reviewing everything that's being done. So the site plan that we submitted, and that was approved, is shown on the site plan, is essentially the plan we're going to build, and we had plans very well along in the design process. And recently, Toyota had requested that we make some changes to that plan, and those changes were prompted by the number of larger trucks that Toyota sells now, the Tundras and the Forerunners, that require a different specification on the vehicle lift, which is a little bit larger, a little bit wider than some of the lifts that we're putting in. So we have to add a few of those lifts to the plan. That requires us, in addition to that, there's new requirements for electric vehicles that require specialty tools that the mechanics have. So the tool chest that the mechanics actually use, the ones that work on both the EVs and the standard vehicles, they're a little bit larger. So there's, there's needs to have the mechanics have their toolkits and toolbox with them in the dealership. And what that results in is a need for us to take that building and push it six feet further to the west. So in developing these plans and making these changes, we had not yet submitted for the building permit at the timeline that was required. And for oversight, we actually missed the deadline to request an extension, so we're coming here this evening to request a six-month extension for the ability to obtain that building permit. Now, we have been working with staff, and we have an ART meeting scheduled for January, where we are going to present the modifications to the plan, and we're hoping that we can have those approved administratively, because it is a relatively minor change to the site plan. And we're coming before you this evening to see if we can get that extension granted so that that process can continue uninterrupted. So we're coming here tonight to ask if you would grant that extension to us, and we'd really appreciate it.
Okay. Staff?
Good evening again. So we have been working with Gail Toyota since 2022, where they got their wetlands approval and their planning and zoning approval by a site plan review, SPR 1907 and IW 627. We do have final plans. Everything is pretty much in set for them to apply for their building permit. It's just that they have run out of time within the 24-month period. So they are requesting just an additional six months to obtain that building permit, and then they do plan on coming back in in the future, exploring some alternatives with staff for any future modifications. So we figured this was pretty straightforward, and that if the commission would entertain it, that why this wouldn't be able to be approved tonight.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For staff, through the chair. Should we set a date for the six months, or just...
You don't, you don't have to set a date. You just say six months, and it's assumed that it's six months from this date of the meeting.
Well, it's, it usually goes back to the last...
Well, that's what I was saying, goes back to the last...
It goes back, it's six months from the date it should have expired, so.
Which is on Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
The 15th.
Oh, that was six months?
Yep. Well, it's 24 months.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're asking for six months from that expiration date.
Yes.
And what was the expiration date again?
December 15th.
24, right?
Yep.
Okay. So if we can say six months from the expiration date?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Just, just one quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Is six months enough time? So we don't come back and say, okay, can we extend it?
Yeah, we, we believe that it is enough time. For some reason, if something were to happen, we will come and request an extension before that six months expires. Yeah. I didn't want to push it with the commission, because I think six months would be reasonable, so.
Okay, Toyota can't do any more changes, then. You just let them know that.
Yes.
All right. Just bossing them, that's all. Okay. I will entertain... Yep, go ahead.
I might have been out of room. I don't know, you said about the building ought to be pushed back six feet?
Yeah, it's going to be lengthened six feet further to the west, so basically...
Right, right. So you'd be, were you going to have to come back in for that, or doing that with staff?
Well, we, it's possible that we can, we may be able to do it with staff. We're going to present a more detailed plan set with those revisions for review at the ART meeting, and they'll review it and let us know if they can do that administratively.
So with that being said, if, Laurie, with that being said, and relative to what you just said about the six months, if they have to, if they can't do it administratively, will they need more time to submit plans? And I just want to put that out there.
Until we see what the changes are, we don't know for sure. I truly believe it's probably very minor, and I have no doubt that the six months will be fine. If they need to come back, they'll come back.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion, then.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the Planning, Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission to grant an extension of the 24-month timeframe for obtaining a building permit for Gail Toyota of SPR 1907, for an additional six months, which would run from the expiration date of December 15, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay, Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky is four. Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Walter Cruzel.
Four.
Okay, unanimous.
You're all set.
Appreciate that. I think, like to thank the Chair of the Commission, and staff has been wonderful to work with, so you've got a great staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Have a great holiday.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays.
Same to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Commissioners' correspondence, anyone? Walter?
I have a question, and that I, the cannabis, we have two approved sites right now for cannabis.
Yep.
One at, on Elm Street, and the other one on Hazard Ave.
Correct.
Is there any, did we, did we build any limit on how many more we could have, or...
No.
No. At the time that we approved those, the state had put a limit on, put a cap, per cap, per...
Population.
Population.
Yeah.
And since then, since those approval, the state has decided, oh, we don't need, we don't need...
We don't need a cap.
It was removed.
So.
So all we have are separation distances.
But we do have regulations and separation, so.
Okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Oh, wait, I do have a question for Mr. D'Antonio. Anything from the Agricultural Commission? They had a meeting, where you, did you attend?
Yep, yep, yeah, I attended. It's still, still a work in progress, and the, the meeting was running along, so, so there's, there's still, still going over kind of technicalities about definitions and making sure covering everything for different agricultural uses. But, you know, as, as alluded to, you know, it's, you know, we're looking to include, you know, be very specific, include the different agricultural uses, like wineries and petting zoos, things like that, and, and we'll be working with staff. Stephen Heine, he'll be working with us to probably draft, and the rest of the staff to draft, probably special regulations. I don't know if it'll necessarily merit its own chapter, per se, but probably to consolidate everything within a special, special section, which I think will be good, because we've seen, we got a nice summarized view of all the different sections where agriculture's mentioned in our current regulations, and it's, it's all over the place.
It is.
So, you know, there's a, it'll, it'll be very helpful. I think come our next workshops, I think we'll have, we'll have, not a final, but we'll have something more practical to work with.
Thank you. All right. Director, excuse me, Director of Planning?
As I alluded to last time, we are going to have some commissioner training with former Senior Assistant Town Attorney Maria Elston. We have set the dates for January 8th and a snow date for January 15th, just in case we have a blizzard on that night. We haven't set the time yet. You know, we'll probably set it for, I'm going to guess, 6:30 or something like that. It's not just this commission, it's also ZBA and Wetlands. So, and I've got to send that notification out to everybody. So just save the dates, January 8th and 15th, they're both Wednesdays. And then I've spoken to a couple commissioners here, they're a little bit behind on their required credits, so I'm going to be sending out to everybody the, the links to the areas that you could take classes, so, and we'll work together. So you got a little bit of a time, so it'll be, it'll be fine. And that's really all I have, except I hope everybody has a happy holiday.
Okay. Go ahead.
On January 8th, I think currently we have a workshop scheduled?
We do.
Unless we move that off, or, I know we did make some changes.
Oh, we did have a, yeah, that's right.
It's 6:00 PM?
Yep, that's a good point. Yep, so it'll probably, oh, we've got one on the 15th as well. So, yeah, good point.
All right, so that date will change, then.
You'll email us.
Either the workshop's going to change, or the, or the training's going to change. It's just, Wednesdays are the only nights that we don't have commission meetings.
That's why we have workshops.
That's why we've got the workshops, right.
Any authorization for administrative approvals?
None.
Did, all right, because I got an email from the CEO about the Elks?
No, so that's not being received tonight, because it came in the same day. It will be received at the next meeting.
All right, just questioning that.
Something we could, what is that about?
It's, it, because there's changes in the regulations by the state for liquor permits, they have the, remember, they came before us with a site plan for the bar upstairs. Well, now they need another one. They need approval for the bar downstairs, and it's like, why make them go through a whole site plan review for a special permit for some, something that the state decided, you know? And there, there's, use has not changed. There's still, the Elks Club, it's been there for over 50 years, and they've used that room for over 50 years, doing the exact same thing as administrative approval for that. It makes sense to me, why, why make these people...
I just remember raising a lot of questions relative to the Liquor Commission, only because I dealt with them for so long, and liquor control, and knowing how they do all these different things, and I don't know if you guys remember, I was...
Right, and, and, and everything will be fine, but why make them spend all their money for nothing?
No, 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 I just, yeah.
We'll explain it when, when you get the application.
It's just, there's something that the state decides to change, and now all these people have to spend a lot of money for...
No, it's not easy. It's difficult.
It's not, so, it is, it's hard, so. Applications to be, excuse me, received?
We have one application tonight, Madam Chair, being received. PH 3111, 10 Hazard Avenue, Unit 17, application for a special use permit to allow medical use there for a chiropractor. David Vanish, applicant, Emergency Centers LP owner, map 56, lot 22, BR zone.
Okay. And then we have opportunities and unresolved issues. CGS 8-24 referral.
Right, so this is actually post-access easement for the Hazard Institute. The property that surrounds the institute, if you know, the, it's, the Hazardville Institute is literally just that corner, and then there's the property that has the subway and the hair salon and whatnot. So we needed an access easement to go over their property into the back proposed town of Enfield, future parking lot, because we don't, we, it's not going to happen yet, but we're just actually just modifying the access easement that we had from Hazard Avenue and just having it from North Maple Street. So it's actually, was already filed, but we forgot to do the 824, so.
I feel like we've been doing this forever. This, this easement thing.
Well, this, so, it is a little complicated, because there's easements from a private entity, and now, the housing, and now we're doing the access easement through the commercial development.
Okay.
This way, there'll be safe and proper access for everybody to the Hazardville Institute once we're able to put in the parking lot.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send a positive referral to the Town Council to accept the access easement over 319 Hazard Avenue to aid in access to adjoining town of Enfield property to be developed with a town parking lot for the Hazardville Institute and downtown.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're sending a positive.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I will...
We'll double-check on some other dates for our workshops.
All right. Oh, any...
Workshops, but the, the training.
One more thing, just like quick. Could we think about a date for the Council of Chairs? I know that it keeps being talked about, and dates keep, you know, getting put off. So, all right, all right, just, just a thought. Okay. And I will entertain a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas to everyone.
8:17 PM.